Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to, if you look at your ordinance for resolutions for appropriation in tax areas.
This is your, this is your budget as proposed that we talked about last month.
There's so many freaking papers here.
Yeah, it was your very first one, Ken. It's got like, it looks like Cody's got it in his hand. And there's the front of that.
On the bottom here.
Yeah. Well, you have a lot of papers.
Yes.
So these are the final numbers. We should be able to fully fund this and all should be well. So all you guys need is a motion to pass it and then, then everyone signs this paper and you have to mark how you voted. And then I scan that and send that back to the state.
To the state?
I will make a motion to approve the budget.
I will, I will second it. Barb seconded it? Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please sign appropriately.
Make sure you sign where your name is. And then you have those, then you can start your, you can close your, you can close your budget adopting hearing. Probably need a motion to close it.
I'm making a motion to close the budget adoption hearing.
You two can do a good second.
Second.
Second. Diane second. Diane second.
Oh, they're at the other end. Did you close your meeting? You got your first and your second?
I got my first, second. Meeting's closed. You know, I'll start the regular meeting. It was September 10th, 2024.
Or October 8th.
October 8th.
You're a month behind me.
That's last month.
I'll be alright. I don't know when.
I think so. Good job, guys.
Start with old business or we can go around? Do you guys want to start?
Sure.
That way, if you want to sneak out in here.
That's what we're gonna do, too.
Run as fast as you can.
Okay, so, I just, I wanted to come, I meant to make last month's meeting, but I wasn't able to. But I've been waiting on quotes. I did finally receive my, the last quote today, finally. So we, I had spoken with the DNR and we can do the trail. And so we're gonna proceed with that, as we discussed a couple of meetings ago. Go from Middle Street all the way to Miller Street and then beyond Miller and connect to our bridge up there. With ADA ramps, eight foot wide, concrete trail. There, we have the hydrants. I had a few questions because we talked about the hydrants needing moved. And my understanding was the town was going to do that. And I did ask the question, Natalie and Cody, been talking with them. Once we get that, the value of that or the cost of that we'll put in and that's part of the match on the project. So it'll be recognized as contributing in that, which is, which is, which is very important to the DNR because it is on Town Right-of-Way and all that. And the fact that you're doing that work and the tree removal, we'll want to capture that as well. So anything that the town does along there in preparation, we need to capture that and that'd be part of the cost. It might be, I don't know exactly how to handle it yet, but it may be that you would invoice us, but then put it as zero balance due and as a contribution type of thing.
So the rough estimate from Gary came, did he actually look at them with you? No, okay. Well, he came and looked at them and he said he's thinking it'll be around 2,000 to 2,500. If we can use all the parts, as in valves and fitting, and just need a coupling, that price would go down. He said that we will have to shut that section down because we will need to move the valve and the hydrant. And then he said one area, when he looked at it, will put the hydrant pretty close to the road. Do you know which?
Right here.
Yes.
Is this one? Okay. Alright. So, but that's the estimate from Gary right there, but he says it can be done. Did you mess with it?
I, me and him discussed it.
Okay. Okay, so that's where we're at on that mark.
Okay.
And then how many tree removals have you had so far?
We just, we just, no, we removed, we removed this one over here and then we removed the one down on the other end. So we just had, that was our last tree.
And those totaled up to what?
Well, that one won't affect Mark.
Oh, okay.
Because that's by the cattlingers. Yeah, that's down on that end. This one over here was. Yeah, 1650. 1,650. Yeah.
Say, I figured there was, was there two hydrants in the one valve or? Yeah.
If that's called a valve, it was something, a funky looking thing.
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
Is that what that is, Jase?
I've tried to open it. It is very, very seep shut.
Okay. So you don't even know what it is either, do you?
I don't, no, not yet.
Okay. Well, we'll find out.
How many, how many mailboxes are down through there?
Yeah, and Mark said something about mailboxes and I have been back down through there. Jase, do you know?
The mailboxes are far enough off the road, or far enough, you'll have room.
Okay, there was one mailbox that looked like it was going to need to be moved out. Just one. I think all the rest are good. And it was down kind of close here. If you look down the line.
Is it, is it my family?
Or one of the board members or?
Okay, alright. Well, we can figure out that mailbox too, okay.
Okay. And then, let's see here, did he, yeah, looked at the mailbox. Oh, the, just the notification of the residence and once we start work, because obviously driveways are gonna, they can't use the driveway for a period of time. We'll, we'll get all that information together. But that will have to take place once we get it scheduled.
Okay.
The, I spoke with Brad Thompson today. We're gonna get to work.
Okay.
Which is good because that's, you guys are already using it.
But he said when?
He, actually, he said he was planning on starting next week because he thought the festival started this week. But since the festival is going through next week, it'll be the week after that.
Oh, he's gonna wait?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he wants, I don't think anybody wants to work.
Well, just send the towns, not that bad.
That, well, now, and that was, and I didn't know if that was when he was gonna start on your work in another area. Or, I would guess that would be it. You guys first did.
I think he's starting everything after festival because I ran into him the other day, so, yeah.
Because we do have one holdup, and I told him it's part of ours, although it shouldn't impact this here as much. But the utility poles on the northeast corner there, I spoke with Dalton Weaver, he's the engineer for Duke. And they're leaving tomorrow morning for Florida. The line crew is. And when I got, when I put the work order in, they said the nearest appointment was like October 29th. For him to just get out and look at it, but I worked with Dalton.
And that's on that lot that you're?
Yeah, it's on our property, actually. It's, it's right-of-way and our property. It's across, it's on the north side of Miller Street there, right, right to the corner.
So it doesn't affect our concrete?
No, it's not gonna affect yours. It affects ours going beyond that. But we also have, in front of the funeral home, I spoke with Jeff, met him out here and looked at it. He was, his only concern was parking during a funeral or visitation or something. And talked about with the board and basically, we will do it and like paint a line for a center line through there. And then, I mean, it's going to be so infrequent, he continued doing like what he's doing now. He basically pulls up kind of on the sidewalk anyways. And he's, he actually indicated, I gotta get back with him now, that he may just have that asphalt taken up and new concrete put in there, which was on his nickel, so. And then I need to talk to, is it Bob Cottrell? Okay. Because those are the only two with concrete aprons or anything beyond the trail. And we'll saw cut it, but there's some cracks and damage in it. And if, if he would happen to want that replaced, now would be a great time to do it and probably get a really good deal on it. So we could do that. So I'll probably try to get to him in the next couple of days and see how that works as far as he's concerned. And there's also a drain, I'm sorry.
That's the only two concrete?
That's the only two concrete drives that I saw.
Yeah.
Is that correct? The rest are gravel.
Yeah. We're just gonna put like a small little apron, right?
It'd end up being the same level. They'll just be driving over it, the trail itself. And it'd be reinforced six inches thick on all the driveways.
I have a concern about, you're doing the ADA on each end, right? The other corner of Middle and Main where Rich Baker lives. That really needs to have an ADA thing on it. It's really in bad shape right there. I don't know. Are you considering the trail starting at Central or is it starting at Middle?
This section is starting at Middle.
Okay.
From Middle on.
But I mean, if you have arrows and maps and tell people where the trail is here, where, where are you telling them?
That isn't known right now. It's like, go through town.
Maybe we can look at that, Carol. Maybe we can contemplate that in another, yeah.
Maybe we can take care of that.
Because if it is on that side.
Yeah, when we, yeah.
The ADA grant, I mean, you got concrete work around it to put it in, but the ramps are 500 bucks a piece, basically. Let's see here, cost estimate. Oh, one, one question that the DNR had also was maintenance of the trail, how that's gonna be handled. And if it's shared between our group and the town, you know, in the future. It's, they just suggested that we have a written agreement, okay? Which makes sense. I mean, for, for everybody, so that we're on the same page. So we need to determine that. I mean, I'd leave that for you guys to think about.
What do you guys think? I think shared is.
Oh, yeah, I'm good with that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
If you want to write something up to the?
You want me to have Scott do it, our attorney?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, just that we agree that we'll share any cost of any future maintenance type of thing. And I think we can work with that.
Perfect.
So is it eight feet from like the sidewalk?
It's eight feet from that side of the sidewalk, this direction towards the road.
So the original footprint of the sidewalk you're adding towards the road?
Okay.
So you're not taking any yard space?
You're segmenting it to grass.
But we still have a park out there?
I think so. Jason and I both will believe so.
Okay. Because we have four kids that'll be driving within the next two years, so.
Well, the only part where it's gonna get tight for parking is gonna be over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that'll have to be a decision to be made.
Which we've already talked about moving that back to where?
Yeah, so that's kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's all gonna have to be, you know, no parallel parking.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I, as far as where you're at, Diane, yeah. Jason and I talked about that, so.
Okay. And our intention is for this section, which is, I guess, the middle all the way to the bridge is what I'm considering this section of trail. That, yeah, we would use, obviously, any work you do, like we talked about, as far as moving and the grant that Cody got as, as part of the map, the town contributing as far as matched.
Okay, good.
So do we need to, I mean, have you got something in writing for us, you know, for us to have?
As far as?
Concerning, you know, what all you're doing and should we have Scott do something?
I don't, I mean, it's, if you're only not voting?
You might, you might ask him, but as far as granting permission for us to build on the right-of-way. I mean, the only other right-of-way, we did get a letter from the commissioner, commissioners, the county commissioners, because we're using the right-of-way in different sections along the trail, overall trail. And they just said something that, yeah, they granted permission for us to use the right-of-way. Wherever we, we both agree that it would, you know, be beneficial to the project, something like that.
If there's any money change in hands?
Oh, there shouldn't be any money changing hands. No money changing hands, yeah.
There would be invoices only, is all, and it's just for bookkeeping purposes to show as far as. Yeah, but the, if you do the movement, we pay for all the concrete and cutting and ADA ramps and actually building the trail.
Can you put all of your stuff in just like a quick email to me at some point over the next week or so? From Miller to the bridge?
Just the description of the track?
Yeah, just so that we have it. Maybe it's a little easier to understand rather than?
That's good. And I'll have the, the details as far as for contrails and gooch as well and lay that out. Basically, yeah, what I under, what we understand, you know, letter. You guys have granted permission. Here's what we're gonna do with our trail. Here's the details of it, yeah.
Awesome.
Yep, I can do that for him. Okay, very good.
What about like when we do our mulch and stuff, can we drive over it to get into the yard with the trailers or trucks?
I think you probably kind of have to, don't you think?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking if it's any kind of prohibited.
Right, I mean, the driveways are all gonna be?
We don't have a driveway in the front, but we drive over the sidewalk.
Is there a place that we need, that we would need to do that for? I mean, it shouldn't hurt, but it would, I would be, I would prefer to have six inches thick for you to drive across if you have a particular spot that you could go across.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Stand in front of our house, probably.
Were you talking to vehicle, driving across?
Yeah.
I mean, do you pull in to wash your car or anything like that?
We do that in the back. It's more, it's mainly just, we were talking about this the other day.
Can you get to the back of your yard? Does the alley go far enough? I don't.
Yeah, the alley goes all the way down.
Yeah, we just go by the alley.
Well, I know, and then it quits, doesn't it?
It's fenced off.
Yeah.
So you're talking like maybe once or twice a year?
Once a year, yeah. I think it's probably not a big deal.
Putting that much mulch down? You're not doing it monthly, are you?
Love doing mulch, I'll tell you.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem. It's, and like I told Jeff, you know, as far as the front of the funeral home, and this is just gonna be between us, you know, the, the DNR probably would say, no, you can't park on the trail. But it's a small town. It's not like tremendous traffic. You know, we just want to make sure we build again enough that, you know, nothing happens. And it should be fine because we have compacted gravel under it. And even the four inches should handle an occasional thing like that. It's like getting a sidewalk. We just, if it's a, you drive daily basis, then we want to reinforce it.
If you break it, you're liable.
My concern is, like right now, I usually pull where the grass is and kind of get out of the road. I'll pull on the sidewalk, obviously, but if you're doing an eight-foot sidewalk, I'm gonna be.
Right along the edge of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I'll just say, you know, it's based on, like you guys said, that we still have room to do it and keep that air. If we need to move it a little bit to the east.
I think when I measured the other day, it was actually, that was another question I had. I think we still had like a foot or so of grass left, the eight foot. So what are you gonna do with, if there is, like, are you just gonna gravel that over or is it just gonna leave a little one-foot patch? Or can I kill it and gravel it over?
We don't want to mow just a little bit.
Well, and I, I did wonder that too. If we do have like a little patch there, is anyone gonna want to mow it? Jase is not mowing it.
I wouldn't want to get on the sun.
And if you stop mowing it, I'll step in, that's the way it goes.
I don't want to fade in my yard though.
I don't know, I guess just cross that, you know?
Cross that first when you get there?
Yeah.
I think that'd be okay.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
I mean.
We'd poison it.
I mean, when you think, how you repave our road, just go ahead.
pave it all the way over.
Yeah, true.
Key word, when you repave our road right there.
I mean, that's the next project.
That's probably the next community crossing, we're gonna fight for it, yeah.
And you want us to leave the speed bump, alright?
Yeah. If you can make it bigger.
Yeah, we only lost a couple of pictures this weekend of trackside over there.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, if there's only a foot of grass, I mean.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know. We could check and see if it, if it makes sense to take it out while we're digging that out anyways.
I was just curious, I didn't know, but it's not gonna be used this way for now, though.
Okay. Sorry, I'll leave that up to the town.
We'll make that big decision.
Okay, alright. Any other questions?
I will say, I think that the chalk the trail event was really nice the other day. It was really cute to have all the kids down. I don't know if you guys knew that, the first, the kindergartners and the first graders came down from Rosedale. They brought them by bus. They brought the kindergartners down and the Trail Association provided chalk. And they drew all down the trail, then they got to walk it and then the first graders came and did the same, the same thing and everything. So it was a nice one and it was beautiful weather. It was absolutely beautiful. It was really nice.
Yeah, there were some interesting drawings there.
There was. There was some good art. It was cute. It was a great event.
It's a very creative, uh.
Very creative.
Yeah, it was a good event, yeah.
I think some of those kindergartners are going places. Did you have any more questions for us, Mark?
I, I don't think so. I, I think, like Cody said, I'll lay it out and if there's any discrepancies or whatever, please let me know and then we'll proceed. I'll, I'll try to make it happen, just to go on to the end of your work with Brad. And hopefully that gets us time as we move on up and do it. There may be a gap, we'll get at least to Miller Street and there may be a gap in time depending on our bridge bump and then, and the move of the utility poles and all that over there. So when we get this started, we'll just carry on from you guys.
Awesome.
Good job. Okay?
Fantastic.
Have you seen this? Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and lead if you want.
I think we're gonna boogie.
Okay.
I thought we'd start with you, Brad.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you gotta do your minutes first.
I know, I just gotta do a minute. Didn't everybody get a chance to look at the minutes? I was like. Do we have any bids for the surplus?
Well, we have one.
There you go.
You can open that when you get to old business. I did remind everyone in my Facebook post today, so.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Barb and Diane, that would be you guys, because we weren't here.
So we weren't here, so we can't approve.
Oh, well, I'll make a motion too.
And I'll second it.
Diane, Barb.
No questions? Any other public comments?
Take your vote.
I'm in a hurry here.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, okay. Let's go on to old business, shall we? Do we want to do the bid or?
Um, that's part of old business if you want to.
Let's do that.
Okay. Surplus equipment bids were due today. We got one.
One bid.
It's really not the right time to sell a mower. We may have to refill.
Was that yours then?
Can only imagine.
Okay, I am submitting a bid in the amount of $410 for the Cub Cadet mower with snow blade and mower dent. And that's little can.
Yeah, I was saying, I'm wondering what that's gonna end up at.
You put can in her shop?
My groom in the garage for it.
It'll clean up.
What's that?
For my groom in the garage.
So you have to make a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid. This would stay on the one we have.
You have a second?
If I can, I will, aye.
Yeah, you can second. If I can, I think it's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then we still have?
We still have the mower and the?
Just the greater blade, the one behind the garage?
Yeah.
And yes, our, our nice land cleaner was stolen with the tractor.
Alright. Didn't we close out the stormwater project?
I'm still waiting on the final closeout with Christie. It takes a while, she said, and then the SRF loan will kick in and whatnot, so. I have not talked to her for a while, so we're still waiting. She said it was like a two-step process, so.
So, stormwater, not sewer project, stormwater. Some people are confused. Alright, any news on the murals?
I just talked to her yesterday. She is still waiting on the paneling to get started.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So it's Montgomery's building, right? Which is being sold.
That's why we're doing it on a panel.
I know the owner, the new owner.
Yeah.
Has he been talked to about this?
Um, I don't think that they've, since it hasn't officially changed hands yet, we haven't talked to him. We do have a backup space if they don't want it.
I, I think you're gonna want to look into that backup space, so.
Okay. Okay, well, that's fine. We do have a backup.
I mean, you talked to him.
It's good to be on the front side, yeah.
I mean, you can reach out to him for sure.
Right.
Because I don't, I didn't know what exactly is going on it and where exactly, so.
It was meant to go on the wall next to the fire station.
Oh, okay.
Like, right there. It was not gonna be like all the way down.
Yeah, it's not gonna be huge.
It's gonna be like a small panel one in case this happens. That was the plan, in case the building changed hands or whatever. I did know it was selling and I do know also who's purchasing it. But we just were waiting to see what happened, so, but.
Well, I, it wouldn't hurt to reach out to him and just let him know what the plan was.
Yes.
I didn't know for sure when I talked to him, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
But Carol and I did spec out the water building is a good spot for it. We need it, so, yeah.
I thought that would be good. I don't know, the post office would let us do that?
Post office was?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, because they have to go through.
Yeah.
With it being a panel, I mean, it can really go anywhere, honestly. Even the civic center if they are willing to.
Yeah.
Go for it. But depending on how big the panel is.
Right.
Right there, the little corner, red and white coming in.
Would be awesome spot.
That would be a wonderful spot.
So there's a couple of different options, so, yeah, we'll, we'll find a spot for it, which was, again, why we had the panel mural.
Do you know how big?
I don't.
The layout would be?
I don't think it's gonna be huge because she's gonna have to travel with it, so I don't know.
Yeah.
How huge, very big.
Okay. Alright. New station window, that's the pole on there. Did the, I don't know, like, streetlights get?
Um, I don't think the streetlights have gotten changed out yet, but I will tell you, everybody, that our utility bill on the streetlights, last month it was, well, before they were changed out, it was $674.71 for the month and the new bill is 292.53.
Oh, that's a huge savings.
That's money.
Plus we'll get more of their works.
Yeah.
You know, like in my, like in my area, they never have work, ever.
Yeah, they look great and everyone seems to like them and I just, once I saw the actual number, because when I got the bill.
Be about half?
Yeah, she told me it would be about half, so.
A third is even better.
Yeah, so I was, I, because I looked at the bill, not this round that I just got, the last one, and I was like, I thought I might see my savings by now, and then, then I opened it this month. Yeah, so I was, I, 'cause I looked at the bill, not this round that I just got, the last one, I was like, I thought I might see my savings by now and then, then I opened it this month and it was like, how much is it? I was like, two ninety-two, that's good, so, yeah.
I like them.
Uh, the Bradley Oak Street alley, uh, anybody made a, we made a decision about closing off that alley?
So I know you were gonna look at it.
I have actually had quite a few conversations with a couple other towns, I think it's a good thing.
To close it off?
Where, so, can you, which one is exactly?
So, and we had another brought up as well, correct?
Well, uh, he's not here, so I couldn't even talk about that, he's not here, so.
Okay, I couldn't figure out what.
I kinda am on the opposite side, I think, you know, it, it's a town right-of-way as is. And if we go closing town right-of-ways, you know, for one or more.
Is that what happened with our alley?
Yeah, and now it's, you can't access it from the other end, so that's what I worry about.
And it doesn't cloud and.
Is it back here in the new section? I kinda like it being closed off.
Ours?
Ours.
I, no, it's back towards.
It's back on Oak.
You can have a different say, you don't have to have to say.
Bye Bobby Decker's house? You know where Bobby Decker's ho- Decker's house is?
So, this is.
Yeah, it's like.
The part that's already shown closed off?
No, it's like this part, so you lose access from this side completely, is I believe what's happening.
I think it's, are you on the GIS?
He's on Google Map.
Okay.
I'm just on Google Map one, but.
Let me, let me pull up on the GIS. I think, I, and I, I, you know, I emailed you guys.
I actually thought it was a dead-end alley, I didn't realize it was.
It, it kinda. I think, I, I, this is all I can say, is as a reminder, when we just did the stormwater project, we used all of our alleys to get the stormwater project through town. If we had vacated any of those over the years, we would have been dead-ended asking people for easements and we would have really struggled.
Yep.
And then on top of that, if we go adding to this project, we could then also run into other issues.
We might need to do something.
And the same with down, it's, they, that's, I just think we kinda.
I'm saying it right here.
Get into a wishy-washy situation if we go closing out alleys.
No, that's north.
If we do it for one, then.
Well, forget that then.
Yeah, yeah.
So Oak Street or not?
Oh, I'm too, too blind, I don't see that one right here. Get my bearings here for a second, it says depot, so it's right here that way.
Oh. Okay.
I mean, it's where Sinclair, is that his name, Sinclair's house?
If you guys come over here and look at it on here, I think it's probably easier to.
I think Sinclair's house is down where I live.
This is what, and this might sound completely crazy to anybody else, okay? So this is it, right?
It's like, no, I don't want that Sinclair one fucked up, that's fucking straight, no, I don't, no, no. That's sort of not, I ain't going there, I'm tired.
So, just think about this, this might come really out to everybody. Yes, um, so.
Okay, this is where it needs to go.
Right, so it's this right here, it's this right here, is what we're talking about, see how it intersects right here?
But there's still an alley there.
If there's not an active alley there, no, but there is, yeah, they've got a whole deck on that right there. Okay, so, say somebody took this subdivision, said, man, that house is here.
Right.
So, then you already have like an alleyway access here, like who knows what would happen in the future and then maybe you would still need it, I don't know, I just get weird about that stuff.
I said, I said we must have a lot here.
And like you commented, stormwater projects in the future, if we need that right-of-way, then we're happy to mess with.
Cause there's nothing.
Trying to buy it back and.
It's that's.
Gets into.
That's what cars feel, yeah.
And who knows what happens with it?
But you don't, and I, I don't know, and I, that's, again.
What does she wanna do?
She would like to, yeah, so she owns these two carsoles, yeah, she'd like to add it together, but, and the GIS is not always correct. Because according to this, because according to this, part of their house is on her carousel, and so I don't know, you know, but, um.
How much is it gonna save?
It wouldn't save.
I heard that it's a decent savings, but I don't know.
Is it an empty lot?
It's not, this lot right here, her house is here, and then this is, would be our alleyway, and then this lot is considered like an empty lot, 'cause, and she would chain them together.
Cause my lot and like her, my three lots that are empty is like five dollars a year.
I think we have three separate carsoles right here and it's all, the land is nothing, so.
That, this empty lot cost her a hundred and seventeen dollars.
That's what I was gonna say, I think the.
And that one back here, I think more than all of them, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so it looks like they're sixty, it looks like they're sixty dollars.
Oh, you can't even see where this is at, it's like.
A hundred and fifty dollars a year, so, I, but I don't know, like I said, what, if they're gonna link it together, I don't have any idea on that, so. But. Right, but I, I mean, if this is not like, it's not, I don't know, but that's just where I stay on mine, so.
Yeah, there's, it's literally, you can kinda see that line right there, that's, there's an alley there and she wants to close.
That's what I'm gonna point that out.
Which, really, the only thing that that alley is probably whatever we use for at this point would be for the, maybe the old entrance, but, still, I mean, we may be for. Stormwater in the future or something, so.
No, I agree.
And then, uh.
Right.
I didn't realize it was that one, I got a different feeling on it, on that one. And I don't know the people, I'm just saying that exists.
Yeah, I, I don't know people either, I just said, no, I don't, I don't think closing anything off. So what's everybody saying? Do you vote on it? You want, you want to read some more? I think we should.
I don't, I just said no.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm a, I have my decision, I think everybody, everybody else, you had to vote on it tonight then?
Yeah, just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to vote on it.
I'll second. Vote on whether to.
Close it or leave it open?
Whether to give up the alley on Oak Street?
So you're gonna make the motion of not?
I, I think, make the motion, make the motion how you want it to happen, like, make the motion on whether you.
I will make a motion to keep it open.
Remain a town alley.
Yeah.
And then someone can second that and then you can take your vote and then if you have a vote against that, then you have a vote to do it the other way, so, does that make sense?
Alright.
Yes.
So. Repeat that, Toby.
I will make a motion to keep the alley open and maintain it as a town alley.
Yeah, and we don't, she, she has grass there and whatever, you don't have to really maintain it, but just to, to keep the property, to keep our alley.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays.
Oh, is everybody, okay, it's all in favor, okay.
Motion carried.
Alright.
Town hall door, have we decided, has anybody come up with a?
I have a meeting tomorrow, so I'm asking to give an update or I can email everybody by Thursday or Monday.
Okay. And that's just a second quote on it?
I would.
We still have to have one more, right?
No, we don't, I mean, if we have, uh, some numbers, usually we're fine.
Okay.
Here's a code if you wanna read through it, but.
No thanks.
I would rather have this meeting tomorrow before I do anything. Now, talking about tomorrow, if we're jumping to the next item.
Oh, the drainage grate?
The drain is great, I talked to, uh, John Bennett, he was extremely apologetic of not getting to it yet, he actually forgot about it. He is requesting to have Jace meet up with him in the morning, 'cause he wants to put like a town truck in front of it while he.
Works on it.
Does whatever, I don't know if he's working on it, 'cause I told him we needed a bid on it, so, I don't know, he just kept talking like he wanted the town truck there, he was gonna call you in the morning to see if you had time. To like block this so he doesn't get ran over.
Is this the, right there, where you turn by the?
That's JT, yeah. Cause he was saying that that was all temporary, I don't remember him, I don't know if I was part of that whole thing, but he was saying that that was temporary and he told the town board. That it needed to be built back up, but he has a plan, but he needed to get measurements and.
Yeah, okay, I don't remember it being temporary.
I don't even remember it happening.
I remember it happening, but I don't remember it being temporary, I, I thought it was supposed to.
And it could have just been a conversation of some sorts, but, but anyway, he's.
You had brought up to that, you know, when the new, or, new gas station comes in, will that, something happen there with that drainage?
I think it's going to, just from what I'm hearing, it's gonna happen with that property.
Yeah, maybe we should just.
But I mean, 'cause his, his fix that we've talked about is, it could be a fixed.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be expensive one. It's gonna be up higher, it's gonna be flatter.
Good, yeah.
So basically, it's gonna be steel wedges welded down to bring everything up and.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good, and then, you know, down the road, maybe there'll be a better solution altogether.
Yes.
We can go under that road instead of, you know.
Who owns a lot on this side?
Which lot?
JT.
The ground lot, that's JT's lot.
Okay, I didn't know if that was part of.
They can both have lots, doesn't he have?
So I don't think there'll be a problem with that, do you, Jace?
I, if he calls, I'll go down there.
Yeah.
I need to.
Actually, you could leave, you know, one of our other trucks sitting there, so you wouldn't have to stay there the whole time, but. And.
I'll figure it out.
As long as it's not next week. Or Friday.
Yeah.
You know. Truck bids.
It's already done.
Um, surplus equipment, yeah, that was.
It's gone, do.
Oh, yeah, the trucks got tangled.
Okay, park trails, lions, bark, I would seem to have come to a good solution there, I would think that's worked out.
Yeah, combine that with sidewalks, that's all.
Yeah.
In progress.
That should look awesome.
Yeah.
We should look uptown.
We should, absolutely.
I will say, once we have all that, I think probably. The, you know, middle, the central, probably will need to be something we would look at in the future.
Well.
Just because if that's gonna be the kinda connector for the trail.
Right, I know what you're saying, I think, um, I think.
We'll need to have people not have all their stuff on the.
On the sidewalk, well, I think, um, if you consider a next community crossings grant next year to try to pave this end of Maine. The, this, the block of Maine from central to middle is a whole different animal in the paving game because of the curbs. And because, I'm, almost all of that has to be encompassed in that plan, because once you start milling. You can't mill very far due to the concrete road and then if you start overlaying, you're gonna come up to the curb level because you're right there. So that's kind of a, that's kind of a bigger project than we really realize, so it's something to consider on down the road for perhaps a community crossings and doing all of that encompassing at once. We'll just have to see what our funds are.
If we would be able to just do not pave there, 'cause it's not that bad, and just do new sidewalks on each side.
I don't know, maybe.
I think we.
Which ones?
We're talking about this, our, our business block right here, and.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that's a lot of work to bring those curbs up and.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so that's like a different, I mean, John and I discussed that several times in, in the community crossing stuff. Because of the, the concrete road and once you start milling and then you have the, because right now, some of your curbs are.
Nothing.
There's, there's hardly a curb at all, so.
You know, we.
That's a, that's an intense project.
So whatever happened with that sign, we're still gonna move that on the corner?
We need to move that corner sign, yes.
Oh, when I get with John tomorrow, 'cause he'll have to core drill it.
Yes.
He's, he's done it for us in the past.
Mm-hmm.
So I can get with him on that.
Okay, you can get with him on that, do we have any posts?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, we got a couple posts.
Now, were we moving signs on both sides?
No, we were just moving the one on this side, I thought we were moving the one on this side.
Both sides.
I, yeah, I thought that's what we had talked about, was moving a car length back on both sides, that way you could see.
Both side?
What's the other side?
How far?
Well.
Well.
You're just.
The other side's gonna be even worse if we put longer, wider sidewalks and that.
Well, I don't think we're gonna be able to park there when we put the sidewalks in, I don't think you're gonna be able to park on that side.
What's that eight-foot sidewalk there now, right there?
I don't, I don't know, but I think right now, the main concern is that Jeep in front of Rich's building, that needs to be moved back, we've got to get, ten feet is what we said. That's what we agreed to, was ten feet.
From where it is or from the corner?
From where it is.
Yes, from where it is now, back, so, it, I think, it's just a bad intersection all around, so.
Cause that's just a bad.
And I don't, this side, I think we're just gonna have to determine, we gotta get over there and measure and see if we think we can still keep any parking there or not, 'cause we may not be able to have.
You know, it's not a bad idea either.
You know, just so people get used to.
We say just use yellow paint.
Like right in front of.
Yeah.
I know exactly what, that's a good idea.
Abiding by it is the real issue.
So.
The yellow lines is good.
No, I think that's a good idea.
What's that?
For the yellow lines.
Do you have a no parking sign or do I need to order you a no parking sign, 'cause I really need to order signs if you care. You, okay, you, you don't want?
I'm, the, no parking from here to the corner is a couple that's in that.
Right, and they're custom.
They are?
Yes, they're custom from the other sign company, they're not custom from that company, that was part of it, so I need you to come and sit with me and do that then, later this week, so, okay.
Not Friday. Not Friday. How many posts we have, do you know?
Uh, I have a couple, maybe three.
Okay.
I see my, uh, stop signs back on the pole out there.
Yeah.
It was gone for a while, I was like, whoops, somebody stole that.
It fell down, Duke took it down, they didn't pick it up, so, yeah.
Okay, more we have, alright.
New business.
Surplus equipment, we still have, what do we have left still?
Greater box and the skags.
Yes, the greater box and the mower.
Should we, have we just put it online?
I just put it on Facebook, that's how I did, so, um.
I mean, we did do it once in the paper, you know.
I'd say we just post it again online.
Post it again?
Couple more times, give it another month.
Next meeting or something.
Yeah.
And I'm, like you said, it's a mower, people aren't really buying mowers at this point, so.
I don't really wanna put it on Park County Chatter because you can't control the commenting on Park County Chatter, no offense or anything, but I don't really wanna babysit it.
Why are we talking about that?
We can. So. Uh, why don't you finish your business and then you can do something like that in our business.
Just business. Okay, now we're on a new business, unless anybody else has concerns about the whole business, okay?
My bouncer in the park, we were, that, gutters are done.
Um, the gutters are done, she did not have to party to park, so that was an obvious shoe, gutters are done, they look nice.
So, should we talk about the, the tractor situation?
I did report the tractor, um, as the tractor was reported stolen by James, um, whatever day that was, I don't know, I did open an entrance claim on Monday, the thirtieth, was it the thirtieth?
Yeah, it was reported on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so, yeah, it was reported on Saturday the twenty-eighth, I called the entrance company on Monday the thirtieth, um, opened the claim. He was going to get some more information and get back to me, I did not hear back from him, I emailed him yesterday, he is out of the office until Thursday or Friday. Um, he did say that it, it looked like to him, he didn't quickly see the tractor as like specifically listed on the policy. But he said we had replacement costs on all of our equipment, so he felt like it would be the same for that, he said he would have to touch base with underwriting and double check. I did receive some correspondence from the entrance company asking us to update our inventory, they have not asked us for anything for a couple of years, so, we've had this tractor for as long as this tractor's been around, so. They have not asked us for anything for a couple of years, so we've had this tractor for as long as this tractor's been around, so. Um, I I did ha- I did reach out to John Deere in Rockville. This is the same sales girl that sold us the mower. And, um, the same, I gave her the model numbers and things like that. She can enter it into the John Deere system. Based upon the VIN number two, our tractor, in case it ever pops up in any of the John Deere stores or anything. Um, she gave us a quote for an equivalent compact utility tractor. With a, our, we did lose our land planer in the same time with the land plane, a John Deere one. Um, the total cost for all of that with a bunch of discounts and stuff was thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, this was just to give us an idea of where we were at. He said the deductible was a thousand dollars, so.
So we would just be a thousand out of pocket?
Yes.
Can we vote on it tonight?
Right. I guess I need to talk to him a little bit further, but that's that's where we stand right now. That was just a quick. I just thought, I didn't have any idea what it, I mean, I didn't know what the new tractor would cost us, so. Going to her was the first thing I could think of, so. That's where we're at. Is there anything new on the police front?
Uh, we've been working with the sheriff's department. We were out two or three days last week. Sergeant McNeil came out with us. And we followed up on some leads that they got, some leads that we got, and. No, there's nothing. We've walked, we've probably talked to, I don't know, a few people here in town, plus businesses. Just if there's any video of anything, and there's just nothing.
Shop Mart didn't have anything?
Shop Mart didn't have nothing. Marathon didn't have nothing. Bucks didn't have anything. Jamie's camera's too far away. Hatters didn't kick on.
Mine didn't catch anything going by. Mine didn't catch anything going by, so it didn't go.
We checked along West Street because we had some other information that it might have went that way. Nobody had cameras over there, so.
It's not.
Nothing right now.
Before, so with the, we're saying insurance deductible would be a thousand dollars? And that's all we pay for the new tractor? I'll make, yeah, we could vote on that.
I think we need more information from the insurance company first, but and I'm not, and I don't, I'm not picking, I'm not picking a tractor for the town. I don't, all I did was send, uh, John Deere some information, just, and she just sent this back to me and said, this is what. This is what this tractor today would cost, or a similar tractor. So, um, that was a nineteen eighty-nine tractor. I have no idea, did it have an hour meter on it, Jase?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, um, it did have our new land pride attachment on it. That's a twenty-two hundred dollar attachment that we bought in twenty twenty-two. So she just put an equivalent John Deere piece on that one, but I, again, that's the quick information and.
Okay.
Yes, it's.
So as soon as you can get from insurance.
Right.
Max it up.
So, I mean, I guess.
That's what I'm saying, I'll see the model number here, do a little research real quick.
On that tractor.
Yeah, Jim's not doing nothing but sitting in his chair, so.
So that's, that's where we're at. That's, that was my first instinct, was to figure out what it would cost us to replace it. We do use the tractor a lot. Um, Rob uses it a lot at the wastewater plant, uh, Jase uses it a lot. When we come to the time of year where we need to load sand, we always use the tractor to load sand, so it. It is a very useful piece of equipment. And somebody is stinker for stealing it.
Well, hopefully they get caught and they end up in jail.
Yes.
Cause they're stupid.
What happens if we get anyone and then they find it and we get it back?
Well, I don't know what the timeframes are. That's another question for me to ask. I didn't know if there was a certain time we had to wait.
I guess so.
I will tell you this. My, my only experience was Justin did have a truck stolen and his truck was recovered fairly quickly. However, it was totaled out by the insurance because it had such extensive damage. So I guess kinda think about it in that sense, that even if we got it back, what kinda shape's it gonna be in, you know, I don't know, so.
That's been my experience.
Yeah.
Alright, a little, uh, announcement here. On, um, October nineteenth, I believe that's the last. Saturday of the Bridge Festival, they're going to have, uh, live music, the Crossroad Collective. And Hayrides and Smores by the Fire over by the Civic Center. And everybody's invited to that. That's October nineteenth from five to eight. And then we've had an announcement about our pantry next door here. They are going to close the pantry effective December fourteenth of this year.
It's the seventeenth, yeah. It's December seventeenth.
It says fourteenth on here.
Oh, I thought we worked that Saturday, but go ahead.
It says December fourteenth, Saturday.
Okay.
Okay, um, after five years of service, they've decided to, um, close. It's been hard to keep up financially with fewer grants and dollars available. Uh, plus having volunteers available to help. Um, they're going to try to get, uh, maybe Catholic charities to come in. Once a month or, um, with the mobile unit, so we'll have to see what they decide on that.
We do thank the resource center for serving us for the last five years.
Very much needed when we first opened it. You know, I started helping with it, but.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I got burnt out after a while.
It's, it's definitely.
Physical injuries after working, uh, with all that, uh, but, uh. It is a major commitment, so, but it came down to COVID and it couldn't happen to a better time for us to have it here. People didn't have to look around for, for food and stuff, so. We're, uh, sorry that they're closing. Alright, anything else?
Um, in new business, I have a request from the PTO at Rosedale. They would like to do a fun run and five K on Saturday, November thirtieth. They want to use the roads as the course, so they are maybe requesting. Some help closing some things. They may want the fire department to try to get involved. We have a little more time on this, but Abby sent me a message earlier, so I should probably bring it up tonight. So it's not until November thirtieth. Um, it's going to be the hot shot turkey trot. Aren't they clever? Um, so just keep that in mind and we'll figure out how we wanna, what they need done, so. If that's okay with everybody.
Which road are they talking?
She's not said yet. She wants to use the roads as the course, so.
I have some cones and roadblocks. I can be here for that.
Yeah, okay.
And she's wanting to do a five K?
Five K, I would assume she'll incorporate the trail as well. Because if you're gonna get that much mileage, I'd say you'd almost have to, so, yeah.
Or close all the roads that down.
Yeah, so.
Okay, that's something to think about.
Send my dogs to pound for a day.
We did have, uh, somebody give us a estimate on fence at the frontage of the park.
Oh, did you talk about that last one?
I don't think we did.
You need that, you want that?
Well, what was it? I think it was.
It was a lot.
Twenty-nine something?
Too much. No, you guys did talk about it, cause I remember hearing about it last month.
Oh, so she sent an email.
Email, it was too much.
Oh.
Somebody did, I thought.
I was gonna say, I remember seeing something about it, cause I was like.
We talked about it. I feel like maybe I shared it, I don't know, yeah, okay.
I just wonder if there's any public comment or anybody like, you know, say anything more about having a fence. Do that, I mean.
I think you're coming into winter, so.
Yeah, we can wait till spring.
Yeah, maybe you can revisit, so.
And we're talk, did we hear anything from Scott?
I have not talked to Scott, no.
We're thinking about having the basketball court kinda leveled up and maybe stained and painted and marked. So we're getting some prices on that. There is some grant money, foundation money available for that.
We could probably use that.
Yeah.
Okay, so when we hear from him, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Department.
Oh, dang, I didn't do departments yet. Shoot, okay. Um, do the fire department, the police department, and then I'll get your early ones. I knew I was missing something today.
Okay, fire, had total of eight runs, two medical. Three other, and then two fire. Anything else fire wise?
Breakfast on the twentieth.
Okay.
Best one there, that's Sunday, twentieth.
Yeah, last Sunday of the festy.
Write that down in all caps.
I did, you see right here.
I always write that on mine too. I was like, I always tried it off for you at that.
I wish you more volunteers.
Please.
Any.
Volunteers for what?
Volunteer sign.
For the breakfast or for the fire?
How old do you have to be? Sixteen?
For what?
Fire department.
To eat breakfast.
Eighteen.
Gotta be eighteen for insurance.
Barb, did you have any comments on the park?
No, the fence is too expensive, so I don't think we need to think about it.
Do you even remember that? How much that cost?
Like thirty-five, was it?
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought it was like thirty-six.
I thought that was ridiculous.
It was ridiculous, yeah.
For just one straight section of fence, right?
Section, nothing, no gate.
No gate, no nothing, just.
Chain link?
Yeah.
Chain link.
I just had a quote done and material is pretty high on fence right now.
Is it? Cause I was hoping somebody would say, why don't we do it in-house?
We could potentially, you know, if we are set on it, look at like.
Volunteers come.
Pinewood vent, you know.
If you just do like a wooden.
Pine railing, yeah, those are pretty inexpensive. That'd be probably a mu- lot more reasonable and. I mean, it's still gonna deter, you know, kids from running into traffic or something.
I know this is said to be talked about in spring, but if you're gonna put a fence up, I definitely think you should redo the sidewalk through there.
Yeah.
We wanted to do that too, you know.
Okay, galvanized was three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And black coated was four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, just one strip.
How many feet was that?
That's two and a thirty foot, but that's four foot tall.
Yeah, two and thirty, four foot tall. One and one, three foot opening, one to three foot opening, one three foot open. They're making money there.
Um, I'll go on to police. Police have one ticket, three warnings. Any requests, anything, please?
The last Saturday, we all went to the range, did our annual qualifying.
We all, is it you and Mike?
Huh?
We all, is it you and Mike?
Chris.
Chris.
Oh, I don't know why I forget about him.
Cause he's always out at late at night, nobody ever sees him when he comes out. Um, on property things, I sent Scott Craig an email. Basically asking him what we do with these properties if we don't hear anything back from the certified letters that I sent out. Which have we got any of those back?
Yes, we did. We got back the one on the property that I sent you an email from Becky Lowe. I forwarded you an email.
Yeah, I could print that thing, I could print that little thing she had. That's this one over here.
That's this one over here. Um, the one, Don Jones's old house, that lot, that one did come back and they did mow it.
They moved the trailer over there.
Yeah, that one behind our house got mowed.
They mowed the old trailer, okay. Um, and then.
So they mowed, they mowed this and did they, I haven't been over there this week, but did they clean up?
Cleaned up.
They did not clean, they did not clean the rest up.
Still there, but they did mow and did a pretty good job.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but I, I did not, I didn't get the card back from Stevenson's property, but they did mow theirs, so, yeah.
Stevenson's mowed, but that truck's still there.
There's a black truck there now, but the green truck's gone, yeah.
Right, so I've been waiting for that black truck to be there twenty days, which it's been there long enough now.
Been there long enough now.
But anyway, what Scott was telling me, I just said, Scott, I have a question about how to proceed after certified letter's been sent out. Once it's sent out after the ten days, if I haven't heard anything, what should we do? What can I do? Um, do I post a letter in an envelope on the property, take pictures, what do I do? Scott wrote back and said, I assumed you've not received the green card. Um, he said you can also check online to see that. He's, and they gave me these options. He said, we can serve the owner in person if I can find them. Which I think I know where Stevens lives, so I can make a trip to Vigo County and go talk to them. We can leave a pers- a person, copy at the person's address, so we have to know where the owner is to leave it at their address. Not the property we want cleaned up. Or we can put it and post it at the property and then wait another ten days. Um, he said sometimes you run into property where the owner's passed away. Or it's a business, kinda like I think what we're gonna run into with George.
George's has been mowed.
Yeah, somebody's been over there cleaning that up, so I don't know what's going on there.
I don't know, I don't, I didn't watch. It was up for share of sale, but I don't know if it sold at share of sale. I assume that it didn't, but.
Do we know if, uh, the one right here at South and West is transferred hands yet to that new owner?
South and West, oh, John's house? I don't know that it's, I don't think so.
When I talked to him about two weeks ago, he said that should be getting done anytime.
Last I looked online, it was still in his name.
Okay.
And it doesn't take that long to transfer. I mean, it's usually two or three days and they're cleared online, so. Um, I did see some people down there, but I don't know, so. He did take the sign down too, so I don't know.
Well, he said that she bought it.
Right, so.
But the delay was first he had to get it in his name. That took a minute, I guess, with the death of his mother. I can look at that this week.
Yeah, it's in his name now, I will say that.
Yeah, I did see that.
While we're on properties, um, I know we had an issue with a van being parked right there. Uh, was it Woods Alley? Right there, coming off Miller, going like the old bank, straight down. Behind Rich's, the apartment complex.
Nobody's told me about it.
Well, thi- thi- this was before, they used to always have the van parked there that just, now they've got like a silver Jeep. I don't know if it's parked over the.
Garage?
Yeah.
But you, you cannot see pulling out of there at all.
They've got the.
They're talking about Richie's house?
Yeah. I don't know if you can look at that or see if.
Well, the bad thing about her garage right there is it's kinda right in front of her garage, which is where you would pull in.
Well, but if there's a sidewalk there and she's covering the sidewalk.
She can't park on the sidewalks.
And it goes out into the street.
Yeah.
You just can't see any.
It doesn't run, does it?
Well, and that's what I was gonna say, see, cause I don't think it's moved.
The weeds were growing around it pretty good, I think.
Well, that's why I was.
One of the last time I stopped to talk to that boy, uh, which I think is.
Her brother.
Yeah, uh, what's her name?
Kara.
Kara's brother, about mowing the grass and stuff. I made a, I came back around the block like thirty minutes later and he was out there with a, literally. With a pair of scissors trying to cut the grass away from the fence. Like he didn't have a weed eater or something, but.
No.
It's bad, I don't think a lot of people.
But I'll be out this weekend and I'll be going around.
I would like to, I really, I know that you've talked to her, but I think that, uh, Alexis and Jordan Corner over here. Um, that place was really bad.
So that's one of them, we've sent them a letter, haven't we?
Yes, we haven't sent them a certified letter.
Okay, so that'll be one where we send them a certified letter, give them the ten days, and then if they don't want to clean it up. I don't know how that, I'm gonna have to talk to Scott. How does that work if they're living there and, I mean, he's not wanna, wanna go in there and try to clean up their property while they're there? Cause then you're in a, with a.
Right, it's a volatile situation.
Right.
They're talking about the corner of West and.
Well, didn't he, Scott, didn't Scott say the last time he's in, like, if we run into that, like, we just have to do it and police have to be there and.
We're talking about, uh, right down here on West Street. If you come around the corner from the tavern, couple houses in, this is really bad.
Yeah, last time I stopped and talked to her, she was, uh, let's just put it this way, I wasn't a fan of her, or she wasn't a fan of mine, or I wouldn't have been hers. She wasn't very happy with me.
Right.
All I got was that dude.
Well, and the, the tall house, uh, that's a rental house and that is vacant. And I, you know what, I'll just give Berkshire a call and tell them that they need to get, they need to get it cleaned up. So I called them about something else and they're usually pretty good, so I'll tell them we want it done, so.
Okay. Oh, I thought of something, uh, by the way, one burial.
One burial, it's okay.
Well, Natalie and I talked about it and there's a lot of people that are living in their campers around town. I don't know if it's a temporary thing or, or what they're gonna do, but always in the past, we haven't really wanted anybody to be permanently living in campers.
We do have an ordinance that you cannot live in your camper.
Right, so that's something we need to think about.
I can't tell you one person who's.
Before the winter.
Oh, I know one person.
Yeah.
Is there other outside of her?
Oh, well.
Oh, that little, the one back in with the garage there?
Yeah.
It's like a motorhome kind of thing?
Inside of him? West Street, Main Street.
Main Street.
I'm trying to think.
We can discuss those addresses after the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, that made me think, you know, some people have talked about buying mobile homes and putting a mobile home in, in town now. Now, we have a grandfather's law, you can't bring any old ones in, but.
You can't bring anything that's, um, that hasn't been manufactured in the last five years and.
But I'm considering, everybody talk about whether we really want to have mobile homes at all in town now. I mean, there's so many other options now than you can get, you know, mini houses and smaller things that look like houses. And we don't have to have trailers that are going to be, you know.
Like behind your place now.
Well, we're not saying they look bad, but they're not very safe actually. You know, if there's a tornado or something like that, that's the first thing that's gonna go.
And honestly, our, our mobile home ordinance is from nineteen ninety-nine. It is a very old ordinance. It, it can be reviewed and updated with whatever you guys think, so. That doesn't stop someone from doing, you know, a nice modular or a nice manufactured house or something like that.
The manufactured house, you know. You know, we have several of those in town. It's just. And they're.
I did have a complaint about them living in a camper.
Keep our town looking more like a quaint little village instead of a trailer park.
I think people come in town, stay in a camper.
Well, that's good. So that's something, you know, worth you should kind of think about and maybe change that ordinance.
Next meeting, can you have, uh?
I can have copies for everyone, yes, I can have copies. I can email, I'll just email everyone a copy of that.
This just came up last week, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, are you going, okay, Diane, you can do water.
Uh, ninety-three penalties and two tags.
Right, we did not shut anyone off and, um, we made phone calls this month.
You didn't make phone calls?
We did make phone calls. I did, I made phone calls. We need a heater. Our heater went out at the water treatment plant last year. We lived it, we just, we're cold for a while out there. I know we talked about getting some more estimates. If you guys want me to just seek out some estimates, I can. I did call Andrews Heating and Cooling. Their estimate's thirty-two hundred dollars. It's like a hanging unit that's in there that's gas. I mean, that's, that's pretty cheap, I think, um, to replace it. I just need to know.
I know, I gave Gary the, the little plug-in heater.
Right, yeah, last year. Um, I just, I talked to Doug Andrews today, so just let me know. You guys can go forward with this. I can seek out some other quotes. I had another quote at one point in time and it was from, for thirty-six hundred from the guys that I use. So you just tell them what you want to do, but I don't want to put this off forever.
Was it a, a hanging also?
Yes, it was the same kind of unit, so, yeah.
So you have one for thirty-six and what's the one from Andrews?
This one's thirty-two hundred from Andrews. But they're, yours, they're only good for like thirty days, so I had Andrews redo his and his was the same price, so. So we need to take action on that. I did get an email from Derek Rush from the Bank of New York. Our water bond is paid off. He let me know last week. He was waiting for the final posting of interest on the debt service and then he would be sending those funds over to us.
Yeah.
So that is done. And then we need to make a decision on if we want to try to do a nice, because we're getting this money and water meters are systematically killing my heart every month. Jace is looking in holes and it's really not fun, is it, Jace?
We're at a hundred and fifteen.
Yes.
I saw mine was new.
They are, they are, yeah.
When I mow my grass.
I think we've covered, have we covered almost all of them in the country, Jace?
Most have been changed out.
Yeah, so it's, I guess it's easier in town than it was out there, but, um.
Finding them has become an issue, but.
I have a, I have your thing. It's supposed to be on the way. I'm, I've been charged for it. I got a metal detector on the way for him. So I just need to think about how many we want to.
I have a question about those covers or whatever. Ours is pretty deep, I know, buried.
I can put a riser on it, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was the thing.
I just ordered one. I can order another, cause I've got another property that I'm gonna have to bring in.
I was gonna say, mine's definitely, you know, mine most likely.
I thought it was supposed to be that way, so I wouldn't mess it up.
No, it's not.
I, not yet.
I think you better order four or five.
Well, cause I'm gonna pour, I'm actually gonna pour a sidewalk, so I'm gonna have to have one to bring it up to the sidewalk. Just snapping it up or take a look at it.
So.
You say you gotta get with him quick?
That's where we're at, so. I don't know how many more we can get in before the end of the year, so. But we definitely need to make a pretty good size order.
Haven't we had anybody interested in our part-time position other than?
We have Cole's application. That's the only one we have.
That's the only one, should we? Maybe have an interview with him?
That's entirely up to you guys.
Cody, are you available to?
You need help?
Some days.
Some days he'll talk to you and some days he won't. Kinda.
You better.
I know Josh will be here a couple of days next week.
Yeah, Josh is gonna work a little bit.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Just fall break. I told him I could use him for a couple of days if he wanted it.
Okay. Well.
We did have a pretty good leak on the hill. Obviously Jason.
Oh, yeah.
Jason, Gary repaired that last week.
Do you want to give us some dirty details about that?
I'm not saying it was sabotage, but it was not leaking when I left. And then ten minutes later it was, but, uh, we ended up fixing two services. Cause we ripped one out that the way it was run in was a bad, bad system, bad setup. So ripped one out, fixed the other, everybody's back on. No complaints that I know of.
I haven't heard from anybody.
Anything else, street department?
No.
Anything else for you, Natalie?
For me? Um, no, I don't think so. I have, uh, I guess I probably need you guys to approve these additional appropriations. I didn't even think about it. This is, we've additionally appropriated, uh, forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the sidewalk projects. Um, I will do the math with Thompson's and see what the difference is if we're gonna have a little bit of a shortfall from using this ARP money. And then just additionally appropriate a little bit of edit money.
Well, remember, this is also the quote that included all that.
Right, that included that, so we may not, so we may not, yeah. The other tree has come down. I did not have lockery built today, but that other tree is down too, so we are not much further ahead. Those are just the additional appropriations for sidewalks.
I think he said that if his quote from, it was eighteen, so, I mean, if.
Right.
He's putting eighteen in, I mean, I, I would assume that would take eighteen off large.
Yeah, I don't know. He's just using our, what we've already spent as a match. I don't think he's paying us back.
Yeah. But by the time the sidewalk.
No, they're not. We're not paying for that.
Right, 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 but I thought you were acting like Mark was gonna pay us back for the tree removal.
Oh.
So that's just the ARP money for sidewalks, that's it. And then that'll be done with that. Um, our camp is being revamped. Our camp is our payment asset management plan. It's a minor update this year, so it shouldn't cost that much, so for, HWC is doing that right now.
But are people going to?
That's about all I got.
And you wanted approval to do an order of how many?
I don't know.
I think I need to go over there and just start measuring.
Well, maybe, maybe thirty?
And do you think we have more than that money out of that water by coming back?
Oh, I, I think we're happening, we're running like twenty-eight thousand dollars back, so, I just. I mean, I just think if we get thirty in here, that'd be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
I will make motion to approve ordering thirty.
And what are we talking, risers or meters?
Meters.
Meters.
Yeah, we got smoked. My BMW is spun a three sixty. But yeah, he said I kept inching out, inching out, and I finally just wanted to make out.
You have a vote on that?
On favor?
Aye.
I would say, what's your average, I'll look down.
Can I take the Don Yurk thing back? Yeah, cause I have this back. The bill, they're in front of Diane.
You'll need to sign one again.
Oh, what? Are you signing one?
These are the bills, they're pretty thick.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Do I have a second on the bill paying?
Yes. Who was your motion?
Me.
Cody, okay.
I'll second it.
And then I will make the motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All in favor?
Yes.